Well, good evening. Five candidates want to serve. Voters must choose three to fill open seats on the City of Johnson City Commission. And tonight, News Channel 11 is in your corner. We are giving you all the information you need to know and a real opportunity to meet the candidates right now in this live forum which you're watching exclusively here on WJHL.com.
Well, two weeks from tonight, voters will be preparing to go to the polls if they haven't already to make some critical decisions. Who's going to be our next president? Who will hold some key federal and state offices as well?
Lots to decide. In some cities across our region, you're having to decide who will hold some very important local races. And one of them is right here in Johnson City where voters will choose three people, as we mentioned, to fill the open seats on the city's Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, but here's the rub. There are five people on the ballot tonight. All five people are here in our studio. They're here to answer questions tonight, both ours and yours at home. We've got some great suggestions from our viewing audience.
Already we have. Each of the candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves and tell our viewers why they are running for the Johnson City Board of Commissioners. We'll go to each of the candidates tonight in alphabetical order. We've been incredibly fair about it and put lots of time into ordering you here. That means we are going to start with Todd Fowler, Dr. Todd Fowler, candidate for Johnson City Commission. Introduce yourself, sir.
Hi, my name is Dr. Todd Fowler. I am a sports medicine physician at Whitlock Orthopedics. I have lived in Johnson City for 24 years and I have volunteered my entire time here. I have volunteered with different schools, with Scienceville High School, with ETSU, with Milligan College, with the Johnson City Cardinals and Elizabethan Twins, just to name a few. And I also am a businessman. I own three franchises, Little Caesar's Franchises in another part of the state and in North Carolina. And I just want to continue volunteering and give service to the city of Johnson City.
Todd Fowler, thank you. Our next candidate, introduce yourself, Bud Hill Jr.
Yes. My name is William Bud Hill Jr. And I am a local guy. I was born and raised here. I'm a father of four kids. I'm a father to many. I'm a veteran, served both here in the States and overseas. I have many grandkids right now. Right now, we're just trying to get things together with them at school. I also want to be the type of candidate that brings a little bit more diversity to our city. So that's one of the main reasons that I am running, to bring a little common sense and a little bit more diversity to a city that is long overdue. Thank you.
All right, our next candidate is Clayton Stout.
Well, Josh and Sarah, thank you for having this forum this evening. I want to thank my colleagues for being up here. I'd like to say hello to my wife, who we celebrated our 13th year anniversary yesterday with, with our three great little boys. So I want to say hello to them. But most importantly, I want to thank the citizens and the voters of Johnson City for giving me this opportunity over the last five years to serve as a city commissioner, as a vice mayor, and now as mayor. It's an honor to serve this great city. I believe that we're using strong principles to create strong results here. I think that if you look at the results and you look at the record, what's been going on today, and if you ask yourself, is Johnson City better off today than it was five years ago? The answer is absolutely yes. So I'm excited to be back up here in this seat again. I'm excited to be running and I'm excited to be talking about the issues that surround our area this evening. So thank you.
Next up, the other incumbent, Clayton Stout, one of them, another incumbent here tonight, Ralph Van Brocklin, former mayor. Introduce yourself.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Ralph Van Brocklin. I have enjoyed the opportunity to serve and to help guide this community over the last 10 years as an elected official. I think that in the period of time that I have served, you certainly have seen some great things happen in Johnson City. I do bring to the table a little bit different set of qualifications than some of the other commissioners. I've served on the Board of Education, which is hugely important. It's a large portion of our budget. It's a tremendous asset to our community. I've served as a commissioner and I've served as mayor. In the period of time that I have served, four years were spent on the Board of Education from 2007 to 2011. In 2011, I ran for commission. And in those five and a half years, two and a half years of which I spent as mayor, I promised that I would focus on vitalization of our downtown, a heightened commitment to our schools, implementation of policies and approaches to economic development to build a more wealthy Johnson City. And I promised that I would govern in a fiscally responsible manner. I believe that all of these things have heightened in the period of time that I've been on the commission. I look forward to the opportunity to continuing to serve this community and implement all those positive things that we've been building towards in the last five and a half years.
All right, and our last candidate for Johnson City Commission, Joe Wise.
Thank you. And I want to thank WJHL and all those who have been a part of the team here that have made this event possible. Certainly grateful for the opportunity. My name is Joe Wise. I'm running for city commissioner. I presently serve on our county commission, a seat that I would resign from in the event elected to the city commission. I have made my home here for nearly 30 years. I started a business here. I had my first job here. I graduated from Milligan College years ago and spent 10 years working on an administrative role there. I'm running for the city commission because I believe wholeheartedly in the ability to make a difference in our community through local government. And so through my public record, I would look to service on the planning commission as twice elected chair, service on our county commission where I've served for a number of years now, as examples of how I might serve on a city commission should the voters of Johnson City give me that honor.
All right, now that we have met all of our candidates, let's go ahead and start with some questions. Capital projects, really a huge responsibility. But our first question tonight, let's go to property taxes in Johnson City, something as city commissioners, you have the direct ability to change.
Our question to you candidates, would you be willing to raise taxes in the city of Johnson City? And would you be willing to raise fees in the city of Johnson City? If so, why? And I want to remind you again, you have about a minute, minute and a half to answer. We're going to just pose the same question to each of you and we'll start with you, Dr. Fowler.
All right. I think we've been taxed enough right now. So I don't see that we would need to increase any of the taxes because of the increases we've just had. The county taxes were increased, the city taxes were increased, and we need to be fiscally responsible with what we've got. There could be an emergency situation where something comes up, a catastrophe, a flood, that's, I mean, all sorts of things could happen. And I could see that we would need to increase taxes to help with that. Fees for the city, possibly. You'd never know what prices are going to be for different things, coal, electric, those kind of things. So there are some things that could go up with water and such, but I don't see us having to increase anything for a while.
Bud Hill, how about you?
As I stated in the past, I'm against any type of tax, property tax whatsoever. When the county raised taxes on us and city also taxes, I came out with saying that they double dipped on us without nobody having prior knowledge of it. If there was ever a tax raised, it should go to the voters. It should be a referendum on should we raise them or keep it as it is? Because that's who we are representing, the voters, the people here in the city. So it's up to them whether we should raise taxes or not. Taxes are too much. As far as the fee, yes, I would raise some fees because some of the services provided to us is very important and if you're going to pay for it, pay for it. And that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
All right, Clayton Stout.
Sure. You know, I understand people's frustration with taxes because they see how Washington's so mismanaged. But I can tell you over the last five years that Johnson City hasn't been mismanaged. If you look at the property taxes and what we implemented, we earmarked those dollars or those pennies to go to certain projects or certain things. And people see those going to work for them. You see a resurfacing budget that is doing Town Acres, Mountain Dale, North Hills. So you're seeing your tax dollars at work. You're seeing a great educational program here in Johnson City, one of the best school systems in the state. So I understand people's frustration with taxes because it is mismanaged on the federal level and even on the state level. But here, we've done a good job putting people's taxes to work and giving them results. I think if you look at too, the enterprise funds as far as water, sewer, solid waste, those things that you pay a fee on, there are a lot of variables that come into play with that. Obviously, you know, if the Middle East is in turmoil again and gas prices go up significantly or if there's a drought over the summer where water shortages are in place or water. So those are variables and those are business models. So all businesses can fluctuate with an enterprise fund. So I believe that obviously there's a time to look at your fees and to adjust, lower and upper, and bring it down. But I believe the property taxes here in Johnson City, I will remind people that they're the lowest in the tri-cities, below Bristol and Kingsport. And look what we're doing here in Johnson City. And I think we're much better off than Bristol and Kingsport. So thank you.
Clayton Stout, thank you. Ralph Van Brocklin.
There are certainly two different issues here. When you look at fees, the fees generally are ascribed to the enterprise funds and you have to be able to support your enterprise funds. They have to be able to stand alone. So you're going to have fee increases periodically that are going to occur that support capital improvements and capital equipment. And I certainly will be supportive of those small gradual fee increases that support that sort of thing. When it comes to taxes, there are times when taxes have to be raised, whether any of us like it or not. And we certainly look at things, to Dr. Fowler's point, if there's an emergency situation, you need to be able to respond and you can't really say, I absolutely will not raise taxes when you know that emergencies come up at times. Having been mayor, it gives you kind of a unique perspective, I think, that if you haven't been mayor, maybe you don't really have. And that's that there are issues within your organization as far as how your organization functions, whether it provides the services that it needs to the citizens that occasionally require additional resources being brought to bear. There are situations where you want to invest in your community and the only way that you can do it is through a tax increase. Now, what I am looking for when we have that additional tax increase at some point is that we're investing in something that brings a dollar value back that is greater than what we're asking of the citizens in the tax increase with the objective to ultimately lessen the number of times we come back asking for tax increases and lessen the amount of those tax increases that are being required.
Final person to answer the question about would you raise property taxes and if so, for why, is Joe Wise.
I think anytime we're discussing a question like that, we're doing so with a notion of trying to anticipate how each of these candidates would behave in office. And the question is specific, but the circumstances are theoretical and we don't know. And so what I would say is this simply, I don't want to raise taxes for the simple fact of raising taxes. It's not the first answer. It's not the second answer. It will be the answer after all other reasonable options have been explored. As a person who started my own business, I know that when you come to expenses, you have to evaluate them judiciously and consider not just what the cost will be, but what the cost of not making that investment would be. What is the return on investment? And so what I would say to citizens contemplating their vote is not so much whether I would or whether I wouldn't, but more importantly, what criteria would be involved in the decision-making process? I would point to downtown Johnson City. And 10, 15 years ago, every time it rained, it flooded. And we wondered why businesses were boarded up and buildings were vacant. It was because they were subject to flooding every time it rained. And we passed a stormwater fee as a city and we all pay it today. And when it was passed, it was controversial and there were those people who thought we should just write it off and let it go. But we look at a vibrant downtown and a thriving entrepreneurial spirit where people are willing to make private investment in the core of our city and we see a return on that modest investment. And I would suggest to you, it's well worth it.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on to our next question now. Capital projects, really a huge responsibility of the commission.
Can you name one capital project that you believe is critically needed in the city and that you would fight to get funded if you're elected to the Johnson City Board of Commissioners? We're asking for a minute to minute and a half answer. If Dr. Fowler is starting with you.
I think the most important thing is getting our area ready for businesses to move here because that's how we need to increase the money coming into the city, is by having more businesses here and being attractive. We have a wonderful place to live. It's a great attraction, but we need places for them to actually build. So if we could get sites ready for buildings to come, that would be attractive to businesses to come here. Our low tax rates are great for businesses to come here. I don't mind tax incentives to get people to come here because down the road, that's going to be a return on your investment for that. So I think that would be number one. And we need the roads to get to these places to make sure that we prepare for more businesses, more people coming into the city.
Bud Hill Jr.
Yes, as far as capital projects, I would think more in line of not exactly Freedom Hall because since the school system is actually using Freedom Hall, maybe a sort of a project big enough to encompass the whole area. Not only would we have people here from Johnson City participating, but we would have visitors from North Carolina, Kentucky, Virginia, that would actually come here to different shows that would be here. Or since East Tennessee State University is actually using it for its basketball program, it would draw a larger crowd here. So something along that line would be more interested in projecting, so.
The city's working with ETSU on our Performing Arts Center. You're talking about something in addition to that?
Yes. Something large because for the amount of money that we're spending on that project, 1,200 seats is kind of, to me, $8 million for 1,200, you know, a few more, 200, 300 more seats is quite a lot. Specifically, if they bought in some shows from Broadway or some other places, that your crowd is going to be generally larger. So not unless the show is going to be here for two or three days or something like that. But if you have one night only type show, you don't have the capacity for the amount of people that would come and spend that money. And that money is actually coming into our coffers. So that's still something along that line that would be more general. So thank you.
Clayton Stout, a capital project you would fight for?
Yes, sir. Well, obviously, I fought for stronger roads here in this area with a resurfacing budget. So I think roads are critical for people to come to this area. I think too, you've got to look at the capital projects or the buildings that we have out there and make sure you're maintaining them properly, that you don't allow time to expire. If you look at Freedom Hall, Freedom Hall was built in 1973. Just today are we replacing stuff that was installed in 1973. So we cannot wait so long to make improvements to our capital projects and buildings. I think if you're looking at one particular one, that I think, a project that brings in real economic return for our community is a sports complex. That could be a combination of soccer, softball, baseball. But America and our sports is growing. We have children from ages five to 15 to 18 that are traveling with their parents on weekends to go to competitions and to sports complexes. What that happens is that brings people into your area. What they do is they buy, they stay in hotel rooms here. They go to the mall and shop. All of that is sales tax dollars. It's been proven that sports complexes do give you the return that you need for your investment. And I really do think we're lacking in that aspect and not only to attract people into the area, but for our own citizens. Our Civitan Park on Friday night where my boys play soccer is packed. Wingdare Park is packed for every church and co-ed softball team. We need more sports fields here and I'm a firm believer in that. So thank you.
Ralph Van Brocklin, what is a priority for you as far as capital?
Well, certainly good answers all the way down. And my fellow on the commission, I'm happy to say, views things the same way that I do with the sports complex. And that would be my suggestion about where we should be spending money because that is one of those things where you invest money and you get a return that is over and above what you invest in two ways. One, it provides fields for our own youth and our own adults, fields that right now are absolutely stretched beyond capacity. We do not have enough fields to accommodate the recreational needs that we have here. So you're building something that gives back to the community while at the same time, you're putting in place, we hope, enough fields to attract people from outside to hold tournaments here. What we've been told by the people who have done the study is that if we build simply four more fields and have a sports complex of eight available rectangular fields, we hold 10 weekend tournaments over the course of the year, we can realize $6 million coming into city coffers, that's to our businesses. And then, of course, we generate roughly 10% in sales tax off of all those sales. So that's money that then turns around and supports the construction of these fields. So I think when you're looking at how you diversify your income and you try to keep your taxes to your populace down, you have to look for things that bring an economic return like this sports complex concept does.
Joe Wise.
There's so little left to say.
You're lucky being last, right?
Anything other than roads and a sports complex?
Well, I would say, when you talk about capital, I think there are several different kinds of capital spending that you can do. And some of them we've heard about that are investments that have the potential to yield future dollars, whether that's economic development and the way of making things site-ready for industry and business to locate here, whether it's things like the sports complex that would drive new traffic and visitors to our community who are spending here. Those are all very important things when we think about capital, particularly in our local economy where our municipality is very dependent on sales tax dollars, having ways that we continue to feed that pipeline with new revenue. Because right now, every time you see a UPS truck, FedEx truck go down the road, there's a likelihood that local option sales tax wasn't collected, even if you paid the nine and a half percent. It gets lost somewhere between here and Nashville. And so those local option dollars are critical. So I would say that's part of it. But then there are other kind of capital needs that exist that really aren't quite as exciting and aren't as sexy and don't yield a lot of net gain. And those are things like getting the cafeteria out of Freedom Hall and onto the campus at Liberty Bell. And that's an important capital need that's looming before the city. And then the last, and perhaps even least exciting, is the fact that we need to take care of what we already have. Mayor Stout alluded to the road projects, but I would say there's all sorts of capital with respect to equipping the men and women who serve in our police department and fire department and the school buses and roofs on buildings. And those are all things that in isolation are rather boring, but they're the stuff municipal government needs to do.
If you are just joining us, you're watching it live on WJHL.com, a web-exclusive forum of the Johnson City Commission candidates. I'm Josh Smith, Sarah Diamond here. We are giving you all each a chance to let the viewers know you better. So thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to move on to our next question. Johnson City firefighters have spent the last year plus, many of them openly discouraged, even outraged, at the very least, many of them concerned about the behavior and the leadership of their chief. Here at News Channel 11, our community watchdog Nate Morbido has continually been investigating this. And his reports have revealed a growing number of issues within the fire department, some recent, some dating back many years. The city has itself investigated those concerns, but so far has opted against taking any formal action against the current fire chief.
Yeah, the city commission recently directed the city manager to come up with a plan to address the ongoing issues, but that came more than a year after firefighters started speaking up. So how do you think the city commission has handled this situation? And if elected, what will you do to make sure every city department operates in an environment of mutual respect as well as accountability?
Dr. Fowler.
That's a great question. I'm just so happy I get to go first on every question, but anyway. But I support the firefighters especially. I think we need to make sure that they have equipment that they need. They need great leadership. I'm not up to speed completely on everything that's going on with that. And I would think, I would try and treat everyone fairly and make sure that that's what's happening with all of the employees of Johnson City, getting treated fairly and get down to what is going on and make sure that people are treated fairly and that the leadership is doing what they should do to make sure that everyone is doing their job. And that starts from the city commission down to Pete Peterson right now and just all the way down through the entire departments.
So so far, this is not an issue that you've kind of investigated a lot yourself as a candidate?
No.
Bud Hill, how about you?
I have to agree with Dr. Fowler, but with all I've been hearing about it, not to any blame or anything, but I know how it feels to feel being denigrated, you know, by, what you want to call it, boss or whatever, and be scared to say something because it's your livelihood is on the line. But now somebody stood up and wanted people to know what's actually been going on. And not only is that a morale buster, but you have these guys that's coming out to protect you in a fire or a car wreck or anything like that. If morale is low, that means they might take their time to do something that will kind of put the blame on their boss. And for this not to have been addressed in the beginning has been going on too long. We've lost some great people over this little incident and things need to be addressed as soon as possible as far as I'm concerned, I believe.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. It was kind of a long one.
Yes, ma'am. Specifically regarding, and you're a member of the commission.
Yes, sir.
Your take on how your board has handled the issue with the fire chief?
What will you do to make sure every department operates in an environment of mutual respect and accountability?
Well, obviously, there is a vocal group of firefighters, but it's not the whole fire department. So first of all, I just want to make sure we set the facts straight here that you do have a contingency of individuals at the fire department that are kind of having issues with Pete Peterson and city management. But that is not the whole fire department. That is not, perception is not reality here. First of all, there has been a long history between the fire department and city management. So this is nothing new. This has been going on for the last 15 years. Now, I've sat through several meetings with Dr. Van Brocklin. We have listened. I've met with firefighters at the Waffle House, listened to them, talked to them. I've encouraged Pete Peterson to do an internal investigation. Chief Saroy was involved with it with the police department, Scott. Our HR director was involved in it. All those things were fully vetted. So again, we do provide departments that are safe and people can work freely and do their job. I feel as if that's not an accurate reflection on what the atmosphere is at city hall. So I think city hall, we have great employees, we have great firefighters. And you know what? The firefighters have stepped up over the last two weeks, two or three weeks, and done a phenomenal job with the mill fire, the library fire. So sure, there's tough things and there's a lot of history behind that. But the main thing I've emphasized to Pete and to the fire department, sit down in a room, we're not there on a daily basis, work it out. That you're grown men and women, work it out. That's all I've asked. And I've been supportive on both parties, so.
Dr. Van Brocklin.
Yes. I think that the commission, in all honesty, has emphasized to our city management that we need a situation of mutual respect for one another. We need an appreciation shown for effort. So I don't think that these are values that are lacking. I don't think that they're values that have been ignored by the city commission. This particular situation is the responsibility of the city manager to address and to successfully answer. We have emphasized that to him in his performance review, that we expect that this will be successfully addressed and answered over the course of this year. I hope that in fact, we can find a way to bring all the parties together to that point of mutual respect and ability to work with one another cohesively. That's up to the city manager to handle. We've asked it of him, we expected of him. I anticipate that the situation will reach successful resolution over the course of this year.
All right, Joe Wise.
For the city, human resources are a critical component. And all of our services are delivered because of the people who work for the city. Your question dealt specifically with the fire department. And I think it's important to keep in mind that we have a city manager form of government. And what that means is the only employee that city commissioners really have together as a board of commissioners is our city manager. And so I would want to back away a little bit from the question to say ultimately, the responsibility and the power to address that situation exists with the city manager. Now, what does that mean for the city commission? I would suggest to you, three things are critical for the city commission's relationship with the city manager. We need to ensure that he is empowered to do the job, that there are clear objectives stated from a governance perspective. And Commissioner Van Brocklin alluded to those earlier. Make sure those are stated. And then second, empower him, support him in that effort would be the second. And then the last would be accountability. It is critical that ultimately, the day-to-day operations of the city are the responsibility of the city manager. And if there is a problem, he is primarily the one with a problem that needs to be addressed. And so I think we can create that by creating a culture where the city manager is in that role and we hold the city manager accountable to that function.
I think we need to though, follow echo with the two of the incumbents, and yes or no on this, are you happy with how the situation has been handled thus far? And I think the two of you have a chance, should have a chance to answer that, yes or no?
Fair enough question. First of all, I don't want to referee between city management and the fire department. Has it been handled properly from a legal standpoint, from an HR standpoint? Yes, it has. Am I satisfied with where we are with the relationship? No, I'm not. And there's a lot of work to be done.
Dr. Van Brocklin, real quickly on that same answer.
I think that there's room for improvement.
Let's go to our next question, and it's about money and retail sales and the life blood of your budget as a city board of commissioners if you're elected. Recent analysis by East Tennessee State University has showed Johnson City, which was, you know, the longtime retail leader in this region, is not know, the longtime retail leader in this region, is not really anymore. In fact, it's lagging behind other parts of the tri-cities. And that's a big concern for us all.
It is. Is this a concern for you and what would you do about it if you were elected? Dr. Fowler, let's start with you.
We mentioned this kind of thing at the forum that we had previously. And my big deal was I am not very happy that I have to drive to Bristol to Pinnacle to see a movie because how nice their theater is. And that should have been in Johnson City. And we could be doing a lot better on bringing new business, new shopping areas in. The mall is great, it's downtown and all, but there are other places that people are going to shop besides the mall. And it's not in Johnson City now. So we've had chances to bring those here. And we are focusing on downtown, which is great because we need to do that. And I think more businesses will come to downtown as we do renovations and things. And that will help with the tax base, bringing in more money. But we could do a better job at attracting some of the businesses that have gone to Bristol and Kingsport.
Bud Hill, how about you?
I agree with Dr. Fowler. Also, the fact that we're starting to get away from the family-friendly concept of how we actually started out this city because this city was friendly to, a lot of people want to move here because of the conditions that we're here for, them to raise their families. And most of the businesses was adhering to that. But we're kind of getting away from it right now because now it's more into the craft-type beer deal and festivals, Blue Plum and Umosia, which is a form of unity. But we're getting away from what this city was actually built for, just to raise a family and more kids, more stores, you know, just getting away from more fast foods, not what we need right now. We need retail, manufacturing, you know, and we're passing the buck, you know. And I really don't like that period because we always have been number one since I've been living here. And all of a sudden, the year that we are falling behind, that's a great concern to me. So it has to be addressed.
Clayton Stow?
Well, first of all, if you read a report today, Macy's is closing 100 stores across America. Retail is changing 180 degrees. It is not the same environment or atmosphere that we had five, 10 years ago. I would point out the pinnacle and the falls, the financial burden that's been put on the city of Bristol for putting up those developments. So we'll see how that plays out for them. I mean, obviously, I believe Dr. Fowler is right, it's a nice facility, but there was a big financial strain that was put on that local municipality to carry that burden to prep that area. What we need to do with retail is you have to think outside the box today. That's why you do the Tweety Trail. That's why you do Founder's Park. That's why you do the U-Haul. That's why you do a mountain bike park at Tanner Hill. You have to separate yourself from other municipalities. Because what that does, people from Asheville, Greenville, Boom, Bowling Rock, they come here to ride bikes, to enjoy, but what they do is they buy a beer, they buy lunch, they spend hotel rooms. So that's what I think we really have to be doing. Retail, as Mr. Wise pointed out, internet sales are killing retail. Gap is closing. Stores, big boxes are not coming, big boxes are not opening. That's just not the environment in this economy. I think you see that all across this country. It would be nice to land a Costco or one of those, but the big boxes are just not spending the money. Plus, they're really kind of holding the reins right now to see what happens with the presidential election. So what I think we can continue to do is separate Johnson City from other municipalities by creating quality-of-life features through parks, green space, bikes, walkability, you name it. That pays back, that makes up for the sales tax revenue gap.
Mayor, Dr. Van Brocklin, former mayor of Johnson City.
Former mayor. Wouldn't mind joining him being mayor again, but he probably wouldn't like, he probably wouldn't like that a lot.
You got to get elected first.
Yeah, yeah.
So regarding the sales tax, what would you do to help with retail in Johnson City specifically?
Retail and maintaining our position has been hugely important to me. And it's been one of the things that I've spoken to in the five and a half years that I've been on the commission. It's been an emphasis to the city manager, it's been an emphasis to my fellow commissioners during the period of time that I've been on the commission. So much an emphasis that we did finally hire some consultants to do a retail study and to try to tell us what we can do to bring some of the retail in, to Dr. Fowler's point, that we don't have. So we are moving in a positive direction to address that. City manager understands that that is another one of the priorities in this upcoming year is that he begin to more strategically plan for the community. And that includes bringing in additional retail, at the very least, maintaining the position we're in, hopefully building to preeminence again. What else can the commission do? The commission can insist to our legislators, to Congressman Rowe, and to our two state senators, that we need to pass the Marketplace Fairness Act. We need to be able to collect our fair share, due share of sales tax that we're not able to collect right now because people are avoiding it by paying through the internet and the companies that they're buying from are not collecting it for us. So those are the things that need to occur. Retail study, which is occurring, an emphasis on the part of city management to strategically plan, pass the Marketplace Fairness Act, and allow us to collect those dollars that are due us.
Joe Wise.
I think the first thing we need to do is step back and have a bigger picture or a vision for where we want to go. And one of the things we've heard the pinnacle mention, and I think the pinnacle has done things in Bristol, but it's done them at great cost. And it's tried to answer tomorrow's question with yesterday's answer. And yesterday's answer was big-box retail. But as the mayor has indicated, big-box retail is changing and not going to come back. We don't want to invest in blockbuster video rental and we don't want to invest in photo map. We want to be a step ahead of it. And so there are already a number of ideas that have been introduced to this conversation just now about how that might happen. And that has led to my participation on the West Walnut Street Task Force. Because as annexation has changed in our state, the way that we can grow revenue, both property tax revenue and sales tax revenue is different. Big-box retail isn't it and annexation isn't it. So what is it? What it is, is repurposing, redeveloping, and re-envisioning what we already have and making it better and making it more lucrative, both for the community, but more importantly, for the families and businesses that would choose to invest and take the risk on it. And so there are opportunities in that. And it's really going to call upon all of us to cast a bigger vision than just the answers that worked a decade ago.
We're now changing subjects. We're hopping all over the place. We appreciate you coming along for the ride on our live web broadcast here tonight. We're talking about red light cameras. In 2015, the city commission openly criticized the city manager after the Redflex red light camera contract for the city lapsed. And that resulted in an automatic renewal of the contract.
And it didn't give the commissioners the opportunity to review and consider if the renewal was in the best interest of the city. So the question is, if elected, what will you do to make sure not just the city manager, but the full city commission stay on top of and ahead of some major decisions? Dr. Fowler?
Well, I don't think that we should let things lapse and cost us money by not going over those things. So our calendar needs to be full of those things that we need to make sure that we address at the right times. The other thing with the lights and cameras getting tickets, I am all for it if it's saving lives and keeping people from having accidents. If you can prove to me that that's going on, I'm all for it. If it's not, then I think it's an invasion and just a way of letting some other company make money off of the citizens of Johnson City and the people visiting here that don't know that the cameras are there.
Bud Hill, what about you and red light cameras and the issue of contracts?
I'm not against the red light cameras completely. It's just that I have a different opinion about Redflex. I can't see if I got stopped sending my money to Australia, which is more money going there than actually coming into the community. What I would like for them to do to actually rescind that and put our own cameras up. And if people get stopped, they'll use that money that's generated by there to repair the roads. So like I say, it's almost like saying pave the play instead. But there have been life-saving matters. I've actually ran up, come up on a wreck that where somebody had, when the light cameras started flashing, they kind of got paranoid and they slammed on their brakes and they got tailed in. And for that particular reason, I had a different conflict with it, you know, because they could have just kept right on going without hearing it. But people get, misunderstand that light when it goes off. It's not actually telling you to stop, it's just telling you just to be careful going through. But the only thing I'd have against the camera itself is that it's been ran by a company that has nothing to do with the United States whatsoever as far as being a partner. But sending my money that far, just don't have a, just don't like it, you know? That's what it's about. Use it here.
Well, I've spoken to Mr. Epps and I've spoken to purchasing and city manager Pete Peterson, that they have to be mindful of automatic renewals and contracts. All vendors do that. I deal with that on a daily business, daily with my business. Where if you don't send them a 90-day notice with a certified letter, the contract's automatically going to renew itself. And I don't care if you have Perry Mason as your lawyer, you're not getting out of it. So I was very frustrated with staff that they did not pick up on that clause with the Redflex. I want to support the Redflex anyways, anyway. So I've never stood by Redflex. Chief Saroy has provided the numbers. They do not discourage accidents. They actually have caused more accidents at some intersections because people are more reluctant to slam on the brakes than they get a dag gum ticket. So they're not effective, you know, but we're in a contract with them. We might as well ride it out. And then this commission will probably have to make a decision, you know, will Redflex just come get their cameras and pick them out of the concrete and take them home with them? That could be a possibility. But we have to, city management has to do a better job with making sure there's not automatic renewals in contracts, especially with our purchasing department. So that's something I've emphasized to them on a daily basis. But the cameras are, they're not effective in my opinion, and I've never been supportive of them. And I don't see how that, my opinion would change if that, so.
Dr. Van Brocklin?
Well, the mayor stole my thunder. It's, the issue is one of automatic renewal of contracts. And we've been pretty insistent that that not occur again, not just with the red light cameras, but with other things as well. So I think having that under control will address the initial issue that you suggested. As far as the red light cameras are concerned, as far as cameras in school zones, I certainly don't look upon them as an asset to the community as far as revenue generated. The amount of revenue generated is paltry, certainly much less than what it used to be. So when I look at it and I say that I will seriously consider renewing contracts to have red light cameras or putting in place contracts that allow cameras in school zones, it is a cost avoidance type of situation. It is a manpower utilization situation. We honestly can't afford to have our police officers tied up at certain intersections all the time or at the schools to the same level that we do right now. If the cameras are in place, they serve as a monitor and they reduce the potential that we need to have that extra police presence there, freeing up our police for other things that they need to do. So from my standpoint, that's how I look at it affirmatively, not from a revenue generation standpoint.
Joe Wise.
Two-part question. I would say I don't have a philosophical opposition to red light cameras if we can show with data that they're working, which is what others have already said. As one who may or may not have gotten a red light camera in his past, I know it's not something you look on with great enthusiasm to find in your mail. But if it is working, then I think it's something we need to evaluate just as a stewardship of resource question. The second part of the question that you asked goes back to what I said earlier in another question. And I think it's that we need to look to staff and specifically, the only employee the city commission has, the city manager. And we need to ensure that he understands that he is empowered, that he is supported, and lastly, he is accountable. And automatic renewals of contracts that go unnoticed are an accountability question. And I think we need to do two things. We need to say, no, 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 those can't slip by and go unattended. But we also need to look at what kind of systemic method can we put into place to ensure that it doesn't happen in the future.
I think it's fair for our viewers at home that we ask you to just raise your hand though. If you had to vote tonight to get rid of red light cameras in Johnson City, would you vote yes or no? Let's say if you would vote to get rid of them tonight, raise your hand.
At his expense.
I don't have enough data. Can I kind of go halfway?
And I think you explained that, but I think for our viewers at home, they need to know where you stand on this. And we have three who would say get rid of them.
When the contract is up.
When the contract is up.
When the contract is up, would you get rid of them?
Three, yes. Two, possibly.
I just don't like to make decisions willy-nilly.
Sure.
So I don't think I have enough data to be making that decision. And I don't want to make a pledge here or appear to be making a pledge without adequate information.
Fair enough.
Fair enough. All right, let's move on to our next question, shall we? It's brand new. Johnson City's $15 million Memorial Park Community Center has needed a little bit of attention on multiple occasions. We're talking about the standing water that's around that building.
Our community watchdog has looked into this and discovered a possible design flaw is to blame. So our question to you all tonight, if elected, what will you do to make sure you are properly caring for taxpayer property? And also, do you see this as a priority? The Memorial Park Center, which for some is a beloved asset in our community, they adore the place and want to make sure it's running properly. This can be a quick answer for all of you. Let's start with you, Dr. Fowler.
I think when we're going into a contract with anyone that is building or doing something for the city, the contract should include follow-up and make sure that, you know, we're not responsible for things around that are their problems kind of thing. So if we find something like that, we need to get it taken care of and hopefully not at the taxpayers' expense.
All right.
Also, and also before they had actually built the Memorial Park Community Center, should have been a study done. Prior to that, the Memorial Stadium was there and it had a, the way the company that had, well, it wasn't a company, the people that had built that stadium, and that was like a bowl where the water ran off to a certain side of each field, probably wasn't taken into the context when they first started grading that up for water runoff. And that's the first I ever heard about flooding over that way. You know, that would have been one of the first things they should have, making sure that it didn't happen in the first place, you know? That's my answer for that one.
Well, I think that was about three years ago when that story came out. It has been resolved by this time. And we did get Tony Street, the architect involved in it, Tommy Burleson, our consultant with our construction. Basically, what you had is you had a lot of, you had a wet year. I remember that year, it was very wet, you know? And then you also had a lot of runoff from the right field fence from Cardinal Park that was coming down into that corner of the Memorial Stadium or Memorial Community Center. So again, there was no additional taxpayers' dollars used for that remedy. There was a stormwater drain that was opened up, made wider. I haven't heard any flooding issues there in the last three years. It's a great facility. It's something for us to be proud of. It's something that my kids go to, to swim and do indoor swim lessons. So again, construction's tough, there's going to be issues. The main thing is just to be accountable, get it fixed, and make sure we're moving forward and you've got your warranties in place. So again, that was taken care of and resolved, so.
Mayor?
As the issue came to light, a lot of attention was focused by the commission and by our staff. And in fact, the problem wasn't simply a problem on that site. It was, to Mayor Stout's indication, a problem with drainage from Cardinal Park. It was a problem with drainage in the parking lots out there. And it was a problem downstream with being able to handle the water, so the water was backing up into that area. Those things have been addressed. But they were addressed at an expense. There was a cost for that. However, it wasn't simply attributed to that. So I'm not sure that you could say that it was truly a design flaw, although I know that that point has been suggested. I think that it's a broader issue. It was one that needed to be addressed. It has been addressed at some cost without a doubt. But it also took care of a broader problem. We had some people downstream who were getting flooded. And we've taken care of that problem for them. We've been responsible to those citizens and to the issues that have been created.
Joe Wise.
Stormwater is a tricky, tricky thing. And it's a part of the big picture. And I think the first thing I would say is anytime you're in a project like that, we're going to have to look to the professionals who understand the variables that increase and move and mitigate stormwater. So you ask a specific question about that project that I think the two sitting commissioners have addressed better than I can. And then I would say more broadly, we need to look, as we enter into those kinds of questions, we as commissioners have what is essentially a fiduciary duty to the citizens of Johnson City. And so a part of your question was something to the effect, what should be done or should something be done? And the answer is absolutely. If there is an issue where the citizens of Johnson City through their municipal government have been left something less than whole, we have a duty as commissioners to pursue that until it is resolved.
All right, we are on the tail end of our live webcast with our Johnson City Commission candidates. Thank you so much for being here. It's time for our closing arguments now.
Again, we could be here all night long, but we pledged an hour for you, and we appreciate you taking the topics. But what we wanted to do now is give you a chance to make a closing statement, as the people who are watching tonight have to make a decision, should they vote for you? And if so, why? You can make that statement, if you could, within a minute to many, a minute 20 seconds, a minute 30 seconds. Dr. Fowler?
I want to thank you both again, Sarah and Josh, for having us, and WJHL for doing this. I am very blessed. I'm blessed with a wife. I just celebrated my 30th anniversary, so a little older than Clayton. And I have been blessed with five wonderful children. I have a wonderful place to work at Wichita Orthopedics, wonderful partners there. I have a wonderful church that I go to here. I think we live in a wonderful city, and I just am wanting to keep that going. I would like it to be a wonderful place for my children to grow up and to have their children here, and not want to move away somewhere else. I have volunteered since I've been here. That's just an avenue that I've always been taught. My parents were volunteer people and had me volunteering when I was younger, doing things, work through churches, work through mission trips and things. So it's just part of my DNA. And so my next volunteerism, besides I've been president of Morning Rotary, and I think city commission's another way to volunteer, to help Johnson City, to help my family, to help just make sure that our future is good.
Bud Hill?
Yes. My name is, like I said, my name is William Bud Hill Jr., and I would like to ask for your vote on November the 9th, to show that we do have a diverse community that deserve our attention, especially the ones that have not been represented like they have, should have been. My family has been here since, we just found out, since 1784. And this whole area has been a part of my family. Several generations passed, and this is what I call home, my home. And to be here like I am today, to be blessed, I have several, four kids, like I said, but I have 23 grandkids. I have a daughter that just has a birthday today, period, and I wish her happy birthday, Keisha. She lives in Wichita, Kansas, right now. And I told her I'd give her a shout-out, so sorry about that.
You got her vote.
Yeah, I know, big time, you know? So but I just wanted, wanted to know that a lot of things still need to be done here. This, we're a city that's still growing. We're still a young city also, but we have things that happened in the past that we're moving on into a new millennium. And I would just like for you guys to just vote for me on November the 9th. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Josh and Sarah. And Josh, as I've said before, I love your stories that you did on Dr. Wanda Eller and you're doing on him, just fascinating stories. So I know that was shown at our church, and it's just awesome. So thank you for sharing that with our community. I have the experience, I know where we've been, I know where we're going, I know where we need to go. I've been very blessed to live here in Johnson City. I, you know, I went to a military school from the Citadel down in Charleston, South Carolina. I work a small business, I put a lot of time to this community, because I love this community, and I love what it's doing and where it's going. As Dr. Fowler said, I'd love for my children to stick around here and continue to make Johnson City even a better place. So I'm proud of the record that I've had, I know that we're headed in the right direction. We're on the cusp of doing something really special here. We can really focus ourselves. I'm asking for the voters of Johnson City to give me another opportunity to keep moving Johnson City forward, to make it a great place to work, to live, and to raise a family. So thank you guys, and God bless.
Ralph Van Brocklin?
I will echo, I very much appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening and that you hosted this for us, give us an opportunity to talk to our citizens a little bit about what our hopes are for our community. Experience in combination with solid, fiscally responsible leadership is a huge asset to our citizens and to our community as a whole. I bring experience to bear. I've indicated that I have experienced not only as city commissioner, but as mayor, and as a member of the Board of Education prior to that. I believe that if the citizens take a look at all the wonderful things that have happened in Johnson City over the past five and a half years, if you look at the progress that we've made, if you look at how vastly different Johnson City is over the five and a half years that I've been on the commission, I think that you will have to say that fiscally responsible leadership, solid leadership has been demonstrated. And I hope that seeing that, you will commit your vote to me. I would appreciate the opportunity to serve another four years on the Johnson City City Commission.
And Joe Wise.
Thank you. Thank WJHL for hosting this tonight, and appreciate the time and the opportunity we have to share with voters. I would say that I would look no further than my public record to suggest that my future service will be in step with my past service. And that is to be reasonable, and to be responsible, and to look for the common good for our community. And so I would first say, as I've said tonight, I think we need to pursue a vision. We can't keep changing, chasing isolated pet projects. We need to work together with an eye on big picture and leveraging different components so that we can maximize that benefit. And then we need to look to be accountable to that vision, so that as we're moving forward, we're doing so, still measuring against those objectives. And then lastly, I'd say my commitment to Johnson City is 100%. If you should elect me to the city commission, I will vacate my seat on the county commission so that there's no doubt that 100% of my time and my attention is devoted on the city of Johnson City. And I'll remain accessible to you, and would encourage you to vote for me, and I'd appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Gentlemen, you did far better, I'll be totally honest, than any of us thought you would, in answering questions quickly.
No, I thought you were going to do great.
Yeah, right. We made a promise to our viewers, we would do this for an hour, and to you as well here in the evening, and we thank you so much. We want to remind you at home, tonight, election day is two weeks from tomorrow. It's almost over. And early voting is going on right now in record numbers, by all account, from election offices around our area. Our real hope for all of you is that this forum has been helpful as you decide not just who's at the top of that ballot and who you'll choose for president, but as you cast your ballot in this very important Johnson City Commission race.
We hope this has given you the opportunity to have, to give a more informed decision when you go to the polls, if you haven't already voted. So again, gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us, and thank you for joining us on WJHL.com.